Mr. Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Van Johnson II.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem and District Five Alderwoman Dr. Estella Edwards Shabazz.
Present.
Chairman and District Four Alderman Nick Palumbo.
Present.
Vice Chair and District Three Alderwoman Linda Wilder-Bryan.
Ready, let's go!
Alderwoman Carolyn H. Bell.
Present.
Post Two Alderwoman Alicia Miller Blakely.
Present.
District One Alderwoman Bernetta B. Lanier.
Present.
District Two Alderman Dietrich Leggett.
Here.
And District Six Alderman Curtis Purty.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. All rise. I call this meeting of the Savannah City Council to order. Today is Thursday, April the 10th, 2025. The time is 2:06 PM. We want to thank all of you for joining us, not only here in council, but across our various digital platforms and of course, our award-winning SGTV. Savannah will be a safe, environmentally healthy, and economically thriving community for all, and "all" means all. Today's invicta will be introduced by Alderwoman at Large Post One Carolyn Hodges-Bell.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Great. Today, our invicater is none other than Elder Jamal Barrow. Jamal is an elder at Jonesville Baptist Church. He just recently retired in December as a Senior Master Sergeant from the US Army.
Oh!
No, 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 no! Sorry, US Air Force.
That's right.
We don't hold it against you.
After 27 years of service, council, welcome Elder Barrow.
All right.
Let us pray. Gracious and wise God, we come before you today with gratitude and thanksgiving for the city of Savannah, for its rich history, its vibrant community, and the beauty that surrounds it. From the cobblestone streets to the Florin River, from the quiet neighborhoods to the bustling squares, Lord, we give you praise. Today, we look up our city council members and all those who serve this city in leadership. Grant them wisdom in the decision-making, courage in their convictions, and compassion in their hearts. Give our leaders an understanding of the times so that they may know how to govern effectively. May they listen deeply to the voices of the people they represent and seek justice, equity, and peace in all they do. Lord, guide their decisions today. Let their words be thoughtful, their actions rooted in service, and their outcomes bring prosperity and unity to every corner of our community. God, we humbly ask you to bless our city, its leaders, and every citizen who calls Savannah home, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Let us honor our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Elder Barrow, thank you so much for being with us today. Thank you for your service, and we look forward to your next chapter.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Are you ready, sir?
Let us proceed.
All right. I would like to make a motion for the first item on our agenda. Make a motion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for April 10th, 2025.
Second motion.
Then probably move the seconded that we adopt the regular meeting agenda for April the 10th, 2025. All in favor, the kid by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I would like to make a motion for the next two items, item number two and three, for the approval of the minutes for the work session and city manager's briefing held on March 27th, 2025 at 11 o'clock AM, and for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on March 27th, 2025 at 2 o'clock PM.
Second.
Then probably move the seconded that we approve the minutes of the work session and city manager's briefing held on March 27th, 2025 at 11 AM, and approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on March 27th, 2025 at 2 PM. All in favor, the kid by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Too quick, before we get into presentations, I'm gonna take a little bit of mayoral privilege for a couple of reasons. First, I'm gonna ask Mark Massey to come down.
All right. Come on down.
Today.
I'm looking just like you, Mr. Massey. What are we doing?
Go ahead, Mr. Massey. Go ahead, I'll take notes, go ahead. Today.
Go ahead, Mr. Massey.
Today.
Come on. Is everything good? Come on, yeah, yeah. You look good too, I'm taking good pictures of you, come on. He wanna stay far from you.
Ladies and gentlemen, obviously, national appointments are important when people recognize the work that we do. International appointments are even better in elections. So I wanted to introduce Mark Massey, who is the Clerk of Council for the City of Savannah, Georgia, but he is also the Region Three Director for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks.
Thank you. Okay, well, I've been a clerk a little while, Mr. Mayor, and this year, they have elected me to serve the states of Georgia, Florida, Alabama, North Carolina, and South Carolina to represent us on a Board of Directors that plans out the education program for clerks worldwide.
Oh, my goodness, yeah!
So it's always a great bragging tool for us when our clerk leads Region Three. So we have the clerk of clerks, so very proud of you, Mr. Massey, congratulations. The other point of personal privilege, over 20 years ago now, probably 21 years ago, Dr. Otis Johnson and I founded the Savannah Youth Council, which creates opportunities for our middle school students to learn about government, learn about their home, and hopefully to create a passion for them for their lifelong learning, but for them ultimately to be engaged in government in some type of way. Not necessarily in elected office or administrative office, but certainly to be a great citizen. And we found this to be a means for us to be able to educate not only them, but their families, for us to expand the village by which our young people are involved and engaged. And now, our oldest youth council members are now near 40 years old.
That's right.
So, members of our youth council, y'all stand up? We're glad to have them. Y'all still keep standing, we're not finished. You know, they're eighth graders, and they're getting ready to graduate in a little over a month and go to the big, wide world of high school.
Wow.
So it only goes downhill from there. But we're excited to have them, we've been excited to have them as a part of the city of Savannah's family. As you know, they went to Savannah Day in Atlanta, they've been involved in a variety of community service projects around our city, and we're just very, very proud of them. So thank you all so much for being with us today. Y'all can clap better than that, come on. Very happy, Ms. Taylor Turner, who is our advisor for our youth council, who's been serving with us for a number of years, is leaving us, has the nerve to leave us, but she has been an awesome advisor and mentor to these young people, Mr. Manager. I'm gonna miss her terribly, now I have to find me someone else, but thank you so much for your service, let's give her a round of applause as well. Now, I'm gonna ask our friends to come up from the Coastal Georgia Advocacy Center to receive a proclamation declaring April 2025 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Coastal Children's, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Yeah, typo, yeah, you know, it happens.
Yes.
Sorry. All right, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the National Child Abuse Awareness Month was declared by President Jimmy Carter in 1979, the declaration was given through the efforts of child health funders Sarah Omira and Yvonne Federson. After four years, April was officially established as Child Abuse Prevention Month by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas child abuse neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. Child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. Protective factors or conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families, Coastal Children's Advocacy Center has been in operation in Savannah since 1991, and during the past two years have seen over 500 children who have reported physical and/or sexual abuse. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of partnerships created between child welfare, professional education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families that therefore be resolved that I, Van R. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Savannah, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Savannah, Georgia, and witness where I have caused, set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Savannah to be affixed. Ladies and gentlemen, how we take care of the youngest among us and the oldest among us is the mark of a great community. And so for us, we have to, we all can remember growing up in safe, secured, supportive families, neighborhoods, and communities. No child should ever have to endure the trauma, often lifelong, of abuse. And we all must do what we can to ensure that every young person has the opportunity to grow up, be strong, and to be self-sufficient. That being said, I'm gonna get in trouble a little bit here. A lot of these young people are in our families, and oftentimes, unfortunately, there are young people that are being abused, and everybody knows about it, but nobody's doing anything about it. You know how that uncle is, you know how that brother is, you know, I mean, you know, and no one says anything. And so I'm saying, and I'm asking for families, don't let those generation curses continue. The person needs help, in many cases, they need jail, but they don't need to be around to abuse other people. And so we're standing with you in your efforts, however we could be of help, particularly pushing the message about how people can get help and that people don't have to remain abused, then please let us do that, all right? Thank you so much.
Hello, thank you. My name is Rose Grant Robinson, I'm the Executive Director for Coastal Children's Advocacy Center, and my staff that's with me, I have Kristen Borders, she is the intake specialist. And she has just learned how to do forensic interviews, so she is responsible also to help interview children who have been abused. We also have Ms. Jordan Fields, Ms. Jordan is one of our major forensic interviewers, and she is also one of the advocates for the children too as well. Then we have Ms. Anna Handcock, Ms. Anna is actually getting, actually runs our Hispanic Outreach Office, she is also our bilingual advocate, and she's a forensic interviewer too as well. So we are having a grand reopening of our Hispanic Outreach on April 25th at 3 PM. Please come out, we've got a whole different building, especially if you're on the Habisham side, I don't know who district that is, but you most definitely need to come out to where we are. Yes. Okay. And then also, this is Ms. Taylor Munger, Ms. Taylor is on our Board of Directors, and we're so glad to have her support us through all of this. And we are trying our best to make sure that kids are protected. Just for Savannah alone, last year, we saw 275 children, just from the Savannah community, that's not all of Chatham, that's just Savannah. So we really would appreciate everything because you guys do help us and support us because we do receive funding from the City of Savannah, and that is a big help for us as well. So we just want to say thank you again, come out to our grand reopening for our Hispanic Outreach Center because those are a big part of our children too as well. April 25th, 3 PM. Thank y'all so much for this honor.
Thank you very much, and we want them to grow up and be successful, self-sufficient, and we want them to grow up and be champions.
Yes.
I said we have some champions in the house, I think. I think we have some champions.
Come on with it, come on with it. Come on, champions.
Maybe we don't, I mean, I thought we did. I thought that the City of Savannah is 14 and under Savannah Windsor Forest Basketball Team, and the 17 and under Savannah Royal Lions Basketball Team, who have won the GRPA State Basketball Tournament in the house.
We don't see them, where are they? Where are they? Where are they? Come on with it.
Y'all been throwing some swag, man, come on, y'all champions!
It's over with, y'all tired?
Y'all can smile, it's all right. When you champion, you supposed to like smile, like, yeah, we got that, we know, we got that. So very glad for 14-and-under boys.
Oh, that's our 14-year-old.
Head Coach Levon Landy, Assistant Coach Kagan Richards, 17-and-under boy Savannah Royal Lions, Head Coach Todd Rose Jr., Assistant Coach Sherri Kettle, and Assistant Coach Anthony Jordan. So who wants to come first? All right, come on.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. Listen, my name is Todd Anthony Rose Jr. I'm the President of Savannah Royal Lions Youth Organization, and I don't want to start calling nobody names because I don't want to leave nobody out. But this one person I gotta give credit to is Mr. Kevin, Mr. Kevin Smith with the City of Savannah. Would you please give him a round of applause?
Kevin Smith's son.
The reason why I decided to call him and give him recognition because he really fight for our kids, he really fight for our programs. We know with time, you know, the population is growing, things are changing, and so it's hard to get practice in the facilities. So I'm gonna ask you all why I'm right here today, please help us out with that. Help us out, whether it's building relationships with the school board or whoever, with the county, you know, we need more practice time because we were blessed this season to start off with two practices, but then we ended up with one. But I'm grateful and I'm thankful unto the Lord because we went undefeated in the City of Savannah as well in Rockdale County for the state championship. Again, I'm thankful for my coaches, Coach Sherri Kett, as well as Coach Anthony Jordan, and also Coach Cooper, that's right there. And I'm grateful for our young men, our young men never quit, they never accept defeat. And sports is just a tool that we use, but it's a life lesson that we're teaching them to never quit in anything. If you want something, just keep going, just keep going, never quit, never accept defeat. And so all of these young men that are standing here, not just for Savannah Royal Lions, but as Windsor Forest as well, they're going to be successful citizens.
All right.
Because they know, like, listen, we just gotta find a way, we can't quit. And so again, we're thankful, thank you for everybody on the city council, and I'm just asking, can you please continue to support our youth? Drop by our community center, drop by on us, you know, stop and have a relationship with these kids because they need somebody that's gonna be consistent with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Trent Rhodes.
Come on.
We have Clinton Rhodes. We have Jaron Smith. And we have, I call him cadet because he go to B.C., Cadet Cooper, Joseph Cooper. And then you also have Naseer, AKA Mr. Grandaddy. And some of the players that couldn't be here today because of school or whatnot or whatever, but we still want to recognize them as well.
Thank you.
How y'all doing? Good afternoon. I would first like to thank you guys for the opportunity to be able to have our kids here today, recognizing the great efforts that they accomplished over the season. I'd like to thank the parents and the kids, of course, for trusting me, right, with their kids and being able to give me the opportunity to win a state championship alongside these kids. I want to thank my right-hand man and my supervisor, my most important and biggest advocate, Ms. McDonald. Ms. McDonald, please stand. Ms. McDonald is the team mom, the cheerleader, the mother, the grandmother, the auntie, she's everything for us, and so without her and her efforts, as well as our other coworker who cannot be here with us today, Ms. Richards, without their efforts, we would not be able to accomplish this as well. So again, I want to thank the kids, I appreciate you all for being resilient, right, and trusting something, right? When it comes to basketball, there's one thing that needs to happen, right? Everybody needs to be on the same page, right? And even when it got tough, right, in our championship game, we were down 16 points in the second quarter. Right? And I told the kids, I said, listen, I said, it doesn't seem like it's working, I said, but you have to trust me. I said, they can't sustain it for four quarters. I said, we're not gonna change the game plan, you just gotta focus on what we're trying to do. And even through their little frustrations and, you know, we had a little spar in the middle of the game, we had to reel it back in, I had to reel them back in, but even amongst that, right, they were able to trust me, right, and knowing what I was capable of leading them to, they trusted me in that process and allowed our game plan to play through, and we walked the team down, and we took over, and we ended up winning that game by 12 points. With that being said, that's almost a 30-point swing within a matter of two quarters, and they were able to accomplish that because of their resilience and their dedication and trust, right, which are the three most important things in sports. So I just want to say thank you to you all, I know y'all are gonna do great things, they're doing great things already now with their external sports and activities, and so good luck with you guys on that, and continue to do the great things that you guys are doing. Thank you all. And so here are the... And so here are the, the three players I have with me today, right, I have Michael Washington, we call him Bubba, right? I have Kyrie Richards here.
Kyrie!
And then I have Bobby Ankrum.
Bobby!
And then, of course, we have a lot of other great individuals who couldn't be here because of school, but again, on behalf of Windsor Forest, um, I want to say thank you all for having us here and thank you for the opportunity.
Let me tell you how, how proud we are, um, we've, we've been a blessed community, we have seen championship levels, um, from, from our 14 and under level all the way through college. Uh, we even have a Super Bowl champion.
Well, yes.
Um, which means there's still great things coming out of Savannah. And so I appreciate you all, particularly the coaches and, um, team moms and grandmoms for all the work that you do, um, and helping to mentor young lives. Um, the reality is, is that, uh, what you give is irreplaceable, uh, just caring about them, seeing about them, um, and helping them navigate through life. Um, Mr. Manager, practice time for them should not be an issue.
That's right.
So let's, whatever we need to do. We have enough facilities, we continue to put money into our facilities, um, and so we know if they're in our facility, they're not on the street. So, let's do what we need to do to, uh, make sure we, we, we do that, uh, and, and create more opportunities for young people. Now, I came to one of your practices, y'all ain't want none of me, I guess y'all didn't practice that day. But I, I came with my brand-new kicks on, I was ready to, you know, school y'all, but I'll come to your next practice. I'm not even fooling up with y'all, but I... But I, I don't, I don't know either, but you know, it was gonna look good. Um, but thank you all so much and young men, um, if you could do it here, you could do it out in those streets.
That's right.
Uh, if you could do it out in those streets, you could do it through life. And so let this just be, uh, a feeling, sometimes we're down, sometimes our backs are against the wall, sometimes the clock is running down and sometimes the game plan looks like it's not working. Stick with the script. Follow those who, who lead the way and we'll make it happen. So God bless you all, thank y'all for being Savannah Strong.
Mr. Mayor, before they leave, can they stand in front of us and he get a group picture and can we shake y'all hands?
Y'all come on over.
Please.
Come this way.
Where the trophies at though?
Man, I live here.
Can y'all at least send us a picture of the trophies? How y'all come here without the trophy?
Congratulations, 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 congratulations. Congratulations! I gotta come around and get a hug. Y'all gotta get close, y'all gotta get close.
Alright, we're gonna come around, we're gonna try to set you up as best we can.
Come on.
Set you up best we can.
There you go.
I'm gonna peek through these two deeps. There you go. Grandma, you see you. Alright, y'all good?
Thank you. Can you see us back behind here? Baptiste, Gloria Ankrum, I see you! Come on now.
Do I need to get right here? Hold on.
Come on, come on.
Baptiste, you got us back here?
Yes, thank you.
Take one more, I just got over here.
This how 14 years look, they don't look like this when I was going to school. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Shake your head, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor Johnson, Mayor Johnson.
How you focused?
I, I just wanna say to, um, the coaches, y'all hold up a second. To the coaches, I wanna applaud you all so much, especially you, my sister, for taking the time out of your busy schedules. You're not getting paid anything to do this, but this is a love that you have for these children. And I wanna applaud you and let everybody know, it takes a special kinda person to do what you all are doing. And I thank God for you. Can you imagine if these children didn't have any guidance, what could be happening in our city? We look around and see what's happening in this city right now. And it's not nice, but because of you all and the mentoring that you are doing with these young people, they're gonna be able to go and tell other young people how to do things the right way. And for that, I applaud you. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We wanna be very clear about what you said, City Manager, we wanna make sure that they have somewhere to practice. We owe that to them and the coaches who put their time in it, thank you, sir.
Alderman Leggett, I'm not recognizing you because I know, I know what he's gonna say. But you know, as a championship coach myself... Championship coach, yeah. Hey, some of the kids that we have, I know I have one of my parents there who've, uh, brought their kids through our program and sometimes our kids age out, but they don't play high school balls and, uh, their Royal Lions and their organizations allow our kids at 14 and under to continue to play even though they don't play for the high school teams. So thank you, Todd, for still, uh, being open, allowing our kids to play and, and to keep them structured, evolve in their lives. Thank you all very much. Be great, be great. Alright. And now, ladies and gentlemen, I mean, we've, we've tried to keep this under wraps as long as we could, uh, it's been very, very difficult, um, a lot of, uh, media questions that I had not answered, a lot of, uh, inquiries, um, a lot of rumors, speculation and a lot of gossip, but now is the time for us to present the Employee Engagement Team and the recognition of the 2024 Employee of the Year.
I know.
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Manager, you want, how you want to start?
Yep. Christina's gonna start.
Hello, everyone. Good morning, how are y'all? Hey, so we are back again, um, so yes, we are here to, um, acknowledge and celebrate our Employee of the Year, um, which the City of Savannah acknowledges that employee morale is an essential ingredient to ensure recognition and retention of great personnel who create a productive and efficient organization. Um, so we developed this program, um, out of a desire to highlight the exceptional efforts of team members by other team members working within the organization. Such individuals stand out among their peers not only for the successful execution of their work assignments, but also because of their dedication, their creativity and their actions, um, towards improving the culture of the City of Savannah. So our Employee of the Year receives a $2,500 check.
Yeah!
One week of incentive leave, um, they will receive a certificate as well as a posting on social media and a photo in our newsletter. So I will let our City Manager introduce our 2024 Employee of the Year.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay, let's give it up to Christina Chandler and our Employee Engagement Team. Well done. Well done. Okay, uh, the ballots have been cast, they have been counted, uh, they have been audited and they have been confirmed, the 2024, if, if it is not you, Alderman, I'm sorry, the 2024 Employee of the Year is Judy Stewart! Alright, Judy. Judy Stewart is our Senior Compliance Officer with Code Compliance, she has 10 years of service to Team Savannah. Uh, Judy is an extremely hard worker and goes above and beyond for the department and helps her coworker, coworkers. Ms. Judy is a longtime employee with the City of Savannah and has forged friendships and working relationships with people all over the city. Everybody, and I mean, everybody in the community knows her, no matter where she is, people always come up to her to say hello. Uh, Judy is also a true team player, always offering support to other employees with daily tasks and providing encouragement and motivation specifically regarding the IMPC test for Code Compliance certifications, which is a really, really stressful time for Code Compliance, new Co-Compliance Officers. The impact that Judy has on her department and her community creates operational efficiencies by optimizing partnerships and sharing services. An example of this is when a young mother and her two small children had a major water leak coming up from the floor in her apartment. The establishment was unsafe, unhealthy for the family to live in. At the time, the apartment complex was unable to provide any immediate alternative housing. Officer Stewart contacted other agencies and filled out paperwork herself to find a placement for this young mother and her children. So then, uh, went above and beyond that calling the mother for the next two days to ensure, um, that they were doing well with their placement. This is just one example of her caring and compassion for coworkers and her citizens. And that is why you, Judy Stewart, are Employee of the Year 2024. And I'm not gonna tell you where she said she was taking that vacation, but I'm gonna join her. Well done, Judy, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And on behalf of the City of Savannah, here is the hardware. Hardware, congratulations.
So Judy!
And not as important as the check you're holding, but you're...
Thank you.
You want me to hold that check for you?
I wanna know where she's going.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Jay.
I just wanna thank each and every one of you, um, my team, my director, manager, supervisor, the community and, um, my brother, and I wanna thank God for him. My brother has three strokes and he's here to see me accept this.
Hey, brother, come stand next to her.
That's my brother. And I thank God for him each and every day.
Pippin up there!
And I'm gonna continue to work hard for the City of Savannah. And I promise you that.
Yes.
Okay?
Alright.
Thank you.
Games to walk on back to your chair.
Alright, see you at that.
Excellent.
Thank you all.
Serve hard, right?
Yeah!
That's District Two right there. It's nice, I saw you back there, hi.
Oh Judy, Savannah, hi, again.
Very good. That's nice.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, uh, and for the rest of y'all, I hope you don't mind us patting ourselves on the back, right? Great, wait, great public servants and we wanna recognize those.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So let us move to, um, well, let me, let me just do some administrative stuff first, help expedite, let's go to, uh, the Airport Commission.
Number 25.
And that is, I have his number 25, uh, through, um...
32.
25 through 31.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the airport items number 25 through 31.
Second motion.
Probably moved in second that we approve I have his number 25 through 31. I have number 25 is approval of change order number one with ECS Southeast for special inspections for taxiway G Bridge project in the amount of $36,860. 26, approval to procure public safety radios from Williams Communications Incorporated in the amount of $119,942. I have number 27, approval to purchase two explosive trace detection devices from Rapsacan Systems, the amount of $77,526. I have number 28, approval to participate in the 2025 Visit Savannah Co-op Digital Advertising Campaign in the amount of $300,000. I have number 29, approval for search engine optimization reporting, um, agencies with agency of record Rob Mark in the amount of $25,920. I have number 30, approval to purchase one front-deck mower with a cab from Shade Tractor and Equipment Company in the amount of $48,465. I have number 31, approval to purchase one all-terrain vehicle from Logistics 365 Incorporated in the amount of $27,091. Uh, you've heard the motions, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let us go back to our, uh, alcohol license hearings, uh, seven, eight and nine, I'm gonna ask that we pull number eight and we look at seven and nine, unless there are any other pullouts. Okay? I have number seven is approval of a Class C beer and wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to De Havill, Desai for Element Hotel at 26 West Fairmont Avenue, located between West, I mean, White Bluff Road and Abicar Extension in Almaty District Five. I have number nine is approval of a Class E beer and wine by the package alcohol license to Ashook Lakani for exotic cigars at 507 East River Street, um, located between East Broad Street Ramp and Lincoln Street Ramp in Almaty District Two. This is a public hearing, does anyone have anything against either one of these licenses? Going once. Going twice. Speak now, forever hold thy peace. Members of council.
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Second.
Then probably move to second that we close the hearings, I have his number seven and nine. You've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I have number seven, Alderman Shabazz.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval as is written in our agenda.
Second.
Second.
Probably move to second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I have number nine, Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Max, that we approved a, uh, Class E or Class E beer and wine by the package alcohol license for Ashook Lakani for exotic cigars, 507 East River Street.
Second.
We probably move to second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I have number eight, this is approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales for, to Linder Stevens for Ave Bar and Grill, a restaurant located at 721 Waters Avenue, located between East 33rd and East, uh, 34th Streets in Almaty District Two. Um, this is a public hearing, um, and I do have, uh, a couple of questions. It said there was no concerns from the, um, Police Department, as this is supposed to be a, a new request, a new owner to operate as a restaurant. Um, Mr. Manager, I would like to know the operating hours for this establishment.
Uh, yes, sir, I'll ask Director Jones to come speak to her knowledge about the operating hours. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. The operating hours for this establishment will be Sunday through Thursday from noon to 12:00 PM, Friday and Saturday from...
Noon to 12:00 PM?
Yeah. They have 12:00 PM, it's 12:00 AM.
Noon to midnight.
Noon to midnight. And then Friday and Saturday from noon to 2:30 AM.
What they sell at 2:30 AM?
This is a restaurant, Mr. Mayor.
Come on, y'all.
Alright. Um, this is a public hearing, does anyone have any, um, anything against this establishment?
No.
And there were no concerns, no debat, the neighborhood association or from the Police Department, correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, when they put in these summaries about, uh, there is not an established neighborhood association in this area, which, which neighborhood are you saying that has no objections to this?
Eastside is listening. The Eastside neighborhood was contacted.
They didn't respond, they didn't issue objection.
Didn't show any objection.
The, uh, yeah, I had... Well, let me, let me, any, um, any concerns from the public? Going once?
No.
Going twice? Your motion to close.
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Second. Probably move to second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'm only, uh, raising the issue only because, um, in the same district, but not necessarily the same location, um, about the operating hours of a restaurant, um, and there were concerns...
You know, when they put in these summaries about, there is not an established neighborhood association in this area. Which neighborhood are you saying that has no objections to this?
Eastside is listening. The Eastside neighborhood was contacted.
They didn't respond, they didn't issue objection.
Didn't show any objection.
The, yeah, I had... Well, let me, let me, any concerns from the public? Going once?
No.
Going twice? Your motion to close.
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Second. Probably move to second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose? Motion passes. I'm only raising the issue only because in the same district, but not necessarily the same location, about the operating hours of a restaurant. And there were concerns about restaurants operating that late into the night, so to speak. And so I'm just making sure for consistency that, you know...
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Do we have in code time that restaurants should close?
No.
The alcohol license follows the city guidelines where I believe that you can sell alcohol up until twelve A.M. Sunday through Wednesday, and up until three A.M. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights. Is that correct?
Twelve A.M., so two-fifty-five.
Two-fifty-five.
Yes.
Two-fifty-five. So that's, that's what's allowable under a alcohol license. That's, that's city ordinance. Those are, those are the times when you can, that you're allowed to sell alcohol. That doesn't mean that a restaurant is going to stay open until two-fifty-five A.M. That's just what our ordinance states is...
But they call it food, if they're in there drinking, they call it food, which is customary. And that's probably why it's open that late, because people eat and drink together.
Well...
Do we have any restaurants that stay open to this time and take advantage of what we allow?
Sure.
Yes.
We do.
Oh, okay.
I guess my only concern is, and to Alderwoman's point, is that, and I've been around long enough that I remember the hybrid. At some point, you start selling less food, what a restaurant does, and sell more liquor than what a club does. And then you add music and other things, and the whole characteristics of the establishment changes. So I just want to make sure, if we're saying it's a restaurant, and that's what they're applying for, that it is a restaurant from open to close.
If you also recall, Mayor, City Council adopted what's called a transitional license for, for clubs that were, or for establishments that operated as a restaurant and then wanted to transition to more of a, of a lounge or club feel. And there are different requirements for a bar and lounge in a restaurant. Do you want to talk through what, what additional requirements are for...
Miss Manager, it's not necessary. I mean, I just, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
That I'm just raising it because it becomes very easy to do it within the midst of the, the alcohol license without ever going back to do the transitional. So I just think we have to make sure that they're reminded. Because, you know, young people, then, you know, you want to drink more and eat less. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, we're approving a restaurant, that they need to behave at all times like a restaurant. So just, I mean, I'll leave that to, to, to staff to monitor, but I just want to make sure that, that distinction is made clear.
Mr. Mayor.
Let me start here.
Thank you.
Yes.
That particular business has been in our community for many, many years. And I frequent that area. And I can definitely say that that particular business serve food up until they close. So they do act as if, as what they are, a restaurant.
No, you have to make sure you sell more food than you're selling liquors. I'm just saying, I'm fine with it.
Nine times out of ten, they are selling more food. I mean, you've been there. Dietrich has been Alderman...
Not eat.
Yeah, we've all been there, and we know how that business operates. So that business is operating in the confines that they are supposed to.
Alderwoman, this is a new owner. It's a new owner. So how it has acted in the past was a old owner. This is a new owner. So that's why I'm just making sure, before we call this vote, that everybody's very clear, that acts consistent with what the, the license is being requested. Alderman, per tea.
No, I think, Mr. Mayor, I'm in agreement with you. We just need to make sure at two-thirty in the morning, I see on their safety plan that they don't require higher security on the premises as of right now, especially at two-thirty in the morning if you're selling liquor. I mean, typically, we see some of the issues. I'm in favor of this. I'm just saying, we need to really monitor to make sure that there are no issues there during those hours.
Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I actually met with the previous owners who's, who's actually working with Ms. Stevens and the neighborhood that surrounds this, this establishment. And they actually are in support of it. It's a elderly lady that lived next door, that what they've done, and part of their cleanup plan is to make sure that her house is clean, and the neighborhood that's around it is actually clean. They, and I've been assured by the, by the applicant that she will be a part of the everyday plan. But I just want to make sure that, that city staff, that when we are moving forward with giving liquor licenses, that we are more diligent in our application process before it even reaches up to City Council.
Yes, sir. I think, again, we have to ask those questions and then let staff do their work. Yes. So the motion is, well, one moment, we've closed the hearing, correct? Yes, sir. Alderwoman Wild, I mean, Alderwoman Miller Blackley.
Yes, I just want us to hold each and every one of these businesses that come to us for a liquor license to the same standard that we hold certain businesses that's coming for a liquor license. It seems to me that every time a black business come up, we always got to hold them to a higher standard and ask them tougher questions than we do these other ones. So my question is this, has the, was the two that came before us, were they held to the same standard? If not, then we need to change the way we do business as a city. Thank you.
Well, I believe they're not the same type of license. One is for a hotel, and the other one is for a cigar store. So I don't think they're, they're not restaurants.
Well, anyone that comes up here like that...
Well, I think, I think, I think you have to make sure...
We always hold the black business to a higher standard. Yes, we do.
No, well, I'm only...
And the city sees it, the community sees it, because they talk about it.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman? I'm asking the questions that I feel led to ask. I think it's a valid question for a restaurant that is open until two-thirty in the morning from twelve noon to midnight, to be able to ask, are they going to be a legitimate restaurant throughout their operation?
And what I'm saying is, ask the ones downtown, on River Street, Broughton Street, the same questions.
There are no, this is a restaurant on Waters Avenue, and there's a question I get the right to ask. And so I'm asking the question, I've had it answered, and I'm asking and trusting the staff will do their due diligence in ensuring that they work within the license as they do with everyone, regardless of their race, their color, their ethnicity, or the food they serve. Now, is there any other questions regarding this particular license? No, sir. Alderman Leggett.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that we approve the Class C liquor beer wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Linda Stevens for the Ave Bar and Grill in the Second District.
Second. Probably move to second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number ten, petition of Josh Yellen on behalf of SRL Land Venture L.C. for zoning map amendment for one point four nine acres at East President Street to change Light Industrial to Plan Development within Alderman District Two. Hello, sir, how are you?
Fine, fine. Pleasure to see you all this afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and the City Council.
Yes, sir.
This is Edward Morrow, Director of Development Services at the Chatham Savannah M.P.C. We have three related petitions today. They are all relatively straightforward. Just like to say, the first is a rezoning, and the other two are modifications to the Eastern Wharf master plan in order to incorporate the parcel that's requested for rezoning, and also to make some minor changes to the master plan. So on your screen right now, you can see the future land use map and the zoning map. You can see the subject parcel is indicated for downtown expansion. And the current zoning of the parcel is Light Industrial. It's just over an acre in size, I believe, and so it's not really suitable for industrial, especially given kind of the redevelopment that we've seen in this area of town. And so this zoning request would change this from Light Industrial to Plan Development designation for its intended inclusion in the Eastern Wharf master plan. Just to give you a little bit of background on this, Savannah River Landing was the prior name, but it's currently identified as Eastern Wharf, and it was adopted in its current form in April of 2017. And the stated intent of the PD was to redevelop the approximate fifty-six acre site in a manner more consistent with the landmark historic district that is just to the west. And the original petition included the adoption of PD text, which was appended to the city's zoning ordinance, as well as a master plan. The civic master plan that was originally considered, you can see here, and today's subject parcel for rezoning was not included at that time. And so this will complete that small portion of the puzzle left undone. Just a quick note with regard to impact and suitability, the one thing we found interesting was that CAT does not presently serve this particular site. And so we think it's important to note that for the site's future inclusion in CAT's programming, at the point that development permits are sought adequacy. And so with that, M.P.C. staff does recommend approval of this request to rezone from Light Industrial to PD to include this small portion during Eastern Wharf.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Were we taking ten and eleven together?
Do you want me to do all three? Okay, absolutely. So actually, this is an aerial view related to the nine hundred and nine zero one request. And so this is for the specific parcel that's requested to be rezoned. And there are also smaller changes that are associated with other parts within the established Eastern Wharf master plan. And so just to give you a background, in addition to including that one parcel, there are four other things that are going to happen here. Essentially, there's going to be assignment of standards to blocks that were previously unassigned, or they did not have standards, reassignment of blocks to new uses, and reallocation of area dedicated to certain uses on those blocks. So no major changes here, with the exception of just some minor updates. The text itself will remain as it has currently been adopted. And so just to review the actual PD text, showing that this does require council's approval, this is a modification to an approved master plan. And you can see at the top left, this is the current master plan. And if you look at the bottom right, the larger image represents what you were being asked to approve today. It would include the parcel requested for rezoning from Light Industrial, as well as, again, aligning other parcels with currently adopted standards. And so with that, M.P.C. and staff have recommended approval of the items nine hundred and nine zero one dash Z.A. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Morrow, this is a public hearing regarding ten and eleven, I guess, and twelve.
And fifteen.
Oh, right, those, well, those are the ordinance side. I have Susan Gorecki. You here? All right, you submitted a card to oppose. Come on, come on. All right, you, you, this is, you have two minutes. You state your name and your address, and then we'll start the clock, and then you have two minutes to tell us what you want to tell us, okay?
Good afternoon.
Bring, bring the mic a little closer to you, so that, there you go.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Gorecki. I'm a homeowner at five zero nine Port Street in the Upper East River Community. And my main concern with the amendment of file number twenty-five dash zero 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 nine hundred dash Z.A. is the third access road that would lead into the Upper East River Community. At this time, I feel our neighborhood is the best kept secret when it comes to vehicular traffic. We have a lot of foot traffic, but right now, access onto our streets are only allowed from Eastern Wharf or Pilot Street, and we'd like to keep it that way, if possible. The number of vehicles does increase, though, with park concerts or other events held at Eastern Wharf throughout the year. But most visitors tend to use these two entrances with their destination in mind. I think if you give people the direct access road to an area that was not available to them in the past, as they say, if you build it, they will come. Patrick Malloy advertises our community in Upper East River as modern, unique, elegant living, setting a new standard of upscale living on the river. But I feel this, with this new access off President Street, could put those that live there or potential new buyers at a disadvantage by inviting, cut through traffic, risk of outsiders loitering, and using our residential area as a public space, congestion issues, and creating noise disturbances, increasing crime, theft, vandalism, or trespassing, disturbance of privacy and security, greater influx of individuals to the area, with a decrease in quality of family life in the community, lack of control of who enters. It will be harder to manage, and will become necessary to increase neighborhood resources and surveillance, which could come at a high cost. The perception of security and exclusivity plays a role in real estate pricing, and loss of prestige could affect the image of Upper East River Community, and faster damage and aging of our streets. I advocate for the decision, decision makers to reconsider building this third entry off President Street and explore alternative uses of existing roads without disrupting our residential neighborhood. A couple of subdivisions along President Street are gated neighborhoods, but are not marked as a luxury community. In contrast, ours is, which makes us a potential target...
Miss Gorecki.
...if additional access points are added.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the public? Is there a motion to close?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we close the public hearing, sir.
Probably move to second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Mr. Yellen, are you standing? Are you standing in for Josh?
Yes, sir.
All right, I have a question. We received in public comments, a statement from Mr. Peoples, who's reached out, and according to him, you all have not contacted him back.
Right.
And so I want to make sure, you know, I'm not really feeling comfortable, and you know how our council deals. Communication is the, the object of the day, and he says, I quote, "I did reach out to petitioner Josh Yellen with my concerns prior to submission of this objection. I had no follow-up response from the petitioner about my concerns." Where this affects us is that this, he owns Industrial Deep Water Rail Service Terminal Parcels due east of the one point four nine acres. It says, "Petitioner shows access via East President Street, which is in direct conflict with the planned grade separation project to elevate traffic over the President Street rail line per the chosen path forward by the planning department." And so I know they have worked in conjunction with us to see how we could deal with the issues on President Street.
I'm happy to address that now.
Sure.
First, a couple of things. There are, one, two, three, six items, ten through fifteen. I thought maybe it might be helpful to sort of organize those a little bit. Ten and eleven go with thirteen and fourteen. Those four items have nothing to do with what's been said so far. That is an attempt to take a piece of property that's industrially zoned, where you can put industrial uses now, bring it into the Eastern Wharf P.U.D. so that it's technically downzoned from industrial to commercial and mixed use. And then in your City of Savannah zoning ordinance, at the back of the P.U.D. is a map, like the one you see on your screen right now. And what we're asking is, is that that square on the corner be colored red so that it matches the rest of the property. So ten, eleven, thirteen, and fourteen is a, about as easy of a petition as I think you'll ever have before you, and that is the rezoning of property zoned industrial, moving it into the Eastern Wharf P.U.D., and then changing the color of the map. That's all that that is. Staff also, in their comments, included twelve and fifteen, which is another matter. That's the master plan side of Eastern Wharf, and I think you have to handle those separately. The comment from Mr. Peoples, we thought was better to be discussed here in the public, in a public hearing. Where you see an arrow right now, there is already a curb cut there. If you go down President Street, you'll see that the sidewalk is right there. So it's there now. We're not asking for it, it's already there. We are aware that the D.O.T. has several plans in mind for improvements to President Street. We know there's a preferred plan, we don't know what the final plan is. Whatever it may be, the D.O.T. has rights of condemnation. We have absolutely no right to stop them. So I wasn't quite sure I even, I even understood the question about, what are your plans on that cut? If it's there, it goes away. We have condemnation all over the city. D.O.T. controls. If they say we can't have that cut there, we can't have that cut there. It may be an issue of compensation, but they have every right to take it away from us.
Was it issue of a phone call? Did you call them back?
I, I can't, I can't answer that.
I mean, I think, you know...
No, no. I, I've been more involved in this. I had some surgery on Monday, which took me out of the office. We, we can't return every phone call, and it wasn't like we heard from them two weeks ago. It was a fairly recent phone call. them two weeks ago. It was a fairly recent phone call. I know Mr. Peoples. I respect Mr. Peoples. But the bottom line is, he should know, all of council should know, we can't possibly stop DOT from doing what DOT wants to do. Whatever they do, they will do. And if it involves taking property, they might end up taking property and a roadway from us to widen President Street. We just don't know right now what that plan is unless somebody on council knows that there's a final plan.
But, Mr. Yellen, you can return a phone call.
Yes.
We return hundreds of phone calls.
This particular call?
Mayor, I'd love to tell you we can answer every single phone. I wish everybody on council can tell me that y'all are able to answer phone calls.
We don't.
Every, it's hard.
Okay.
Between phone calls and emails, and the ability to communicate, we don't always get to everyone as promptly as we would like to. This was in no way intended to be disrespectful to Mr. Peoples. But the bottom line to all of this is, that road that you see, it is there now. DOT may take it away tomorrow. There's nothing we can do. We are not, as a private citizen, able to stop the DOT from implementing any of their plans to improve President Street. And I think Mr. Peoples was concerned that we were going to insist upon that road. We could ask for five curb cuts. It won't make a bit of difference. If DOT says you can't have them, you can't have them. So I just want to make sure, as we try and sift through items 10 through 15, 10, 11, 13, and 14 is just about taking industrial property, which, by the way, used to belong to the City of Savannah. And making it something other than industrial. That has nothing to do with curb cuts. It has everything to do with whether or not it should be rezoned from industrial into a master plan property, a PUD. Items 12 and 15, I think, is the petition that we should talk about involving this, I'm sorry, I don't know the lady's name, her comments about the road. She's saying she doesn't like the road because it may be a third access. Mr. Peoples is saying he's not sure about that road because, I guess, he wants to make sure that DOT is protected. That is item 12 and 15.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, let me just get for clarification. The objections that we are hearing at this point are about 12 and 15, not necessarily 11 and 13.
10 and 11, which correspond with 13 and 14.
13, 14, I'm sorry.
So the hearings for 10 and 11 are related to the zoning change, and then the master plan. And then the 13 and 14 are the council, the ordinance changes related to those hearings.
Thank you. All the way in, Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of baffled about the entire thing also, because I'm trying to figure out, Mr. City Manager, how long has MPC staff and our staff worked on this item, these items?
Well, Eastern Wharf, as you know, has been a long project. It's part of the...
I'm talking about this particular, I'm talking about 10 and 13, and 11 and 14.
I'm not, I'm not aware that it's been that long.
The reason I'm asking you that, sir, is because I know we get a couple of things in our summary, and we talk about them. But I think when they start working on it and getting to the meat of these items, I would really appreciate you guys coming to us ahead of the game, so that we can at least buffer some of this, and have a conversation with Mr. People, or whomever might have an issue with it, so that we don't sit up here and look like we really don't know what's going on. Because, I mean, even though we read it and we understand parts of the summary, then it gives us an opportunity to have a conversation with Mr. Yellen. We have a conversation with Mr. Peoples. We have a conversation with neighborhoods, that we're really trying to work on behalf of both sides of the party, if not the community, when it comes to items like this.
Understood. If I could offer some, some information as well, I think for the items 13 and 14, which are the zoning change, and then the master plan change, to me is, and I think this council has done this, types of things to planned unit developments all the time, where there was a parcel that was left out because there was some complication with that parcel. And it was, you know, always the intention that if that parcel were to be under control in certain circumstances that changed, that they would try to enter that parcel back into the planned unit development. I think that's exactly what's happening here with 13 and 14. I think that it's a, it's a, it's a very good thing to downzone that parcel from Light Industrial to a mixed use. The future land use map already calls for that area to be downtown expansion. And you can obviously see how the Eastern Wharf has developed.
We understand that. I think what we're talking about now is transparency, to make sure that we are talking about this prior to coming to council on an agenda.
Yeah.
That we can have a conversation, especially myself. This is a second district item, and I would love to have gone and have some more conversation.
Yes, sir.
Because, Mrs. Susan, do have a valid point, and we don't talk about it. And I would love to have had a conversation with her with it.
Obviously, I can't, I can't foresee every, you know, petitioner that's going to come to a public hearing. And that's why we have a public hearing in those notices. I do, at council's request, send a memo after every MPC meeting that, that kind of foretells what has gone through MPC, and then what is on its way to council. And these were one of those items. But if there's more ways that we can, can dig in, and certainly we hear these on city council's pace, so if this is an item that city council wishes to continue to learn more about, then that's absolutely your prerogative.
Usually, we'll meet with you on a Tuesday, and we'll have a sit-down conversation. We didn't meet with you on this Tuesday. But I think that stuff like this right here, that has more meat, more value, we have to have a more in-depth conversation, so that we will be able to enunciate it better to the public. Because this type of thing is going to come back up in neighborhood associations, and they're going to feel that they're not being heard.
Mr. Leggett, could I add one other thing? Both of these items were at the planning commission, duly noticed, advertised. There was nobody at the MPC to say anything against either of these petitions. Staff recommended approval. It was approved unanimously by the MPC, both your items 10, 11, 13, 14, and 12 and 15. We were candidly unaware that there was even a problem to address, other than the phone call from Mr. Peoples. And the woman who spoke today was the first...
You and I, you and I, over the years, we've always said that if anything come up with my name attached to it, you or your son would give me a call. And we would figure out a way through this process. I haven't heard anything like Mr. Peoples. I haven't heard anything. I'm sorry that she was in the hospital, but I think that Josh, somebody would have gave somebody up here a call, and said, this item is coming. Can you talk about it?
But the, but the answer, and it's just such a very simple answer, is that we, we can't stop progress. We can't stop the DOT. That cut that we're referring to doesn't relate to 10, 11, or 13 and 14. And it's such a minor, minor piece of item 12 and 15, because there's so much more to that petition that we really do need to talk about. That's why I came up here today, to see if we can sort through this. There are two very different petitions. They just both happen to involve Eastern Wharf. One is a zoning petition, to make it part of the planned unit development. The other one is a master plan amendment, to allow for certain things to happen within there. So they are two very different items. They just happen to be the same location. Again, I would say 10, 11, 13, and 14, the rezoning piece, is about as simple of a petition as we, as we've ever brought to downzone from industrial to mixed use. The other one, we'd love to have more discussion, and the engineer for the project is here today, and we can help discuss that. I'd like to have more discussion on that one, if we can.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but we've had, this has been brought up before in previous council meetings, that we approve certain zoning requirements, and we pass them, and then they come back a year or two later, and they just want to change some things, or some, add some things to the current amendment. I just, I just wanted some, some information. That's the only thing I'm asking for, moving forward, that we allow ourselves to be a little more transparent when we are getting information.
Thank you. All the women, Lanier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Prior to, thank you for the presentation, everyone. Prior to January, this, this area was in the first district, but it is now in the second district. And that property did belong to the city, and we did do a swap, because it was some type of utility issue.
You widened the canal.
Widen the canal, and they paved that little edge there. We did that swap back. And so now, that, it's interesting, because we're downgrading. And we're taking a light industrial piece that is usually valued higher, and we are, we are downgrading it, considered downgrading it to, for our residential use. Now, this is the thing that we've been praying, begging, trying to get on the west side, for decades and decades, because we have a lot of incompatible, heavy and light industrial lots. And, and we've been trying to, and it was promised to us that we could downgrade when the properties changed hands, and that didn't happen. But now, those properties are able, has, they have a new use. They could be used for entertainment. But right here today, we are clearly talking about two issues. First, taking a light industrial piece and downgrading it, or allowing it to be used for, for mixed use, which includes a residential, commercial, retail-type use, which is the desired use for housing. And, and then we have the other issue of that access, and the issues that the young lady brought up, that are very valid, that we need to deal with. I understand every concern that she had, and she should have an opportunity to sit down and discuss that, and maybe negotiate some changes. And if we're talking about 12 and 15, for that particular issue, then we have some more accountability there, so the residents could have an opportunity to, to have that discussion. Now, as far as the downgrading of the property, we know what this area is, has turned into, what the desired development pattern is. And that's going to require us changing the zoning on that property to the PUD. We're going to have to do it today, or we're going to do it in a few weeks. But we've all, it's already known what the area is going to be. The light industrial piece is not compatible, and we need to get that out the way, and then deal with the second issue. That's my position. Because we have been watching since this tad, and this development for years, and we know what it's going to be, mixed use, residential, downtown expansion. And this is just a part of that. So I don't really understand today, while we are, we are not moving forward with at least that part, and then deal with the other issues to protect the sanctity of the community for the residents.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All the women, Wilder Bryant.
Mr. Mayor, Council, and Mr. City Manager, I was just reading over this stuff. The first thing that jumped off to me, Mr. Yellen, and you wanted to use an excuse that everybody sometimes does and get back. But you're not new to this. You're true to this. And that's why you stand in front of us all the time doing these cases. So if it comes to us, I would have wanted to not see that you didn't give a follow-up call. The other thing is, number, in the MPC's book, this is very alarming, because it says, "Neighborhood meeting. The subject property is within the Hitch Village Fred Wussel's Homes neighborhood, per Savannah Open Neighborhoods." And we all know that they can't really say anything. They can't even put signs in their yards to say whether they can vote or not. And I bet you, nobody over there was sent a letter about a public hearing. That community is going to be impacted the most. President Street is the beginning of my district, right? And so in my district, I get complaints all the time about the traffic. And, and for me, that, it's a safety issue. We got the railroad going over there. People are taking, in Savannah, it shouldn't take, wherever you are, it shouldn't take an hour and an hour and a half to go home. All right? So we putting all of this in this bucket. And, Mr. City Manager, I didn't get my books, sir, until Monday, right? And so y'all want us to sit up here and vote on stuff that's going to impact people forever. And so along with these planned development, this, this book says that, therefore, the use table in section 5 for principal use table does not include the PD district. All uses that are identified and approved by the general master plan shall be permitted. That master plan that they use is kind of obsolete. It really is. And so what's going to happen is, when y'all do this planned development, somebody's going to come with a variant, saying, can we do this, or can we do that? So I'm asking you what your definition of planned development is, and what Mr. Morrow's definition of planned development. Because the planned development that y'all gave me doesn't always equate to what we get when somebody else comes to vote in front of us. I'm really upset about y'all putting neighborhood meeting, when y'all know there's not a meeting in a public housing.
All the women. You moved the mic.
Yes, sir. I'm kind of upset about this, because when y'all say that there is an association, and there's no complaints, nine times out of 10, you haven't talked to that association, because one does not exist. When you put in this summary, I would appreciate if you said there's one that not exists. And we already know, everybody who's sitting up here know, you can't even go and campaign as an elected official, because the housing authority doesn't allow it. And so you're saying that the neighborhood meeting, that I doubt happened in Hitch Village, when people are trying to survive, their children are running back and forth across the street, and y'all say this is a good thing. I mean, I just needed to say that. And I object to this. And I have a personal privilege that I can use to say that. I'm not signing my name on something that I got on Monday, and we got to vote forever and ever. And Anthony's tax IDs and all stuff, that's a problem that I personally have. We need more information before we vote on something that's going to impact everybody, from the beginning of President Street to the end. And about a half of that is in the third district, until it runs into the county. We got to do better. On this side, City Manager, and Mr. Yellen, you can't use that as an excuse, sir. You really can't. Thank you, City Manager. I appreciate what you do.
All the women, Mella Blakely.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the lady who did the, could you please come back up? So I can, what is her name?
Ms. Gorecki.
Ms. Morecki?
Gorecki.
Gorecki, okay. Okay, I don't, I don't need that. Ms. Gorecki, you live in that area.
Yes.
And your main concern is, why change the zoning from what it is now, to what it, to what Mr. Yellen and his client, I'm assuming, wants to change it to?
No.
No.
What, okay.
It's not the zoning.
No, her, her issue is really about the third access road, which is 12, 12 and 15.
Right, the road. Now, if they change that, you're saying that there's going to be more traffic in that area?
Correct. More direct access into our community.
Into your community.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Yellen, you're saying that that property belongs to DOT, right?
What I hope I said, anybody that has a driveway, entranceway, at any time, here or anywhere else in the City of Savannah, if the DOT has plans to make improvements, and those improvements include removing your access road.
Mm-hmm.
It's gone. They need to compensate you for it. They need to take care of you. They need to look for an alternative route. But nothing is sacred, nothing is in stone, when DOT comes behind you with a plan. When you see a median go up in the middle of a road, and all of a sudden, you can't come in and out of a property, that's because DOT has designed a road that may harm property owners, but the property owners have no right to object. DOT has jurisdiction of this roadway, and if they tell us we can't have this entranceway, we can't have it. It may be a topic of compensation, but they have the absolute right to get rid...
And you're wanting, you're wanting access to this particular piece, this road, for...
There's already, if you look at an aerial, there's already like a, an old cut that's there now.
Mm-hmm.
It's there now. So we're not creating it. It's already there. And this lady, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, Mrs. Quebec.
Gorecki.
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 Gorecki, I'm sorry, is saying that with this third entrance, she's concerned about traffic coming in, that there'll be an additional entranceway.
Correct.
And that may, I'm not a traffic engineer. I don't know if that means more traffic, less, I, I, that's not my field. I can't, I'm not qualified to answer.
So you're here, and you're asking for, for your client?
He's asking for the rezoning of East President Street and 13, and he's asking for the request to amend the final master plan for Eastern Wharf, right?
Correct.
Those are two things you're asking for.
That is step one, 10, 11, 13, and 14. And if you look at the map, it's the corner piece that squares us up.
Right.
It makes no sense for that to be industrial.
Right.
If we're concerned about harming the neighborhood, leaving it industrial is a harm to the neighborhood.
Yes, it is. I didn't say that.
You know, I was just talking to Mr. Morrow. This was intended to be... This was intended to be one of the simplest, easiest petitions ever brought to City Council, which is the unanimous decision of MPC and staff to rezone industrial into the PUD. If we can, if we can focus on what 10, 11, 13, and 14 is, let's come back to 12 and 15 and talk about that plan, because there's more to it than just the road.
Mr. Yellen, we reserve the right to make the simple complicated, okay?
You've done a great job.
Allow us to do that. All right. So, Members of Council, let's break them up to your point. 12 and 13, 12 is to be able, well, sorry. 13 is about rezoning East President Street.
Yes, sir.
And 13, I mean, 14 is, the, I'm sorry, the 15, no, yeah, 14, is amending the final master plan for Eastern Wharf. That squares it up. That gets us to where we need to be. The issue that she's mentioning is dealing with issues of 12, the hearing, and 15. So we can, we can delay on those, or however you want to do those. But let's, let's deal, let's get the one thing out the way, and then deal with what the other issue is.
Yes, sir.
Because there are kind of two separate issues, albeit they look very related.
Yes, sir.
Okay? So, one, well, I'm trying not to be confused. I don't, I'm saying it, but we're in the middle of our proceeding, so.
Who is he?
I don't know.
Who is he?
I don't know. I don't have the clearest idea. So, as it relates to item number 13, which is the petition of Josh Yellen on behalf of SRL Land Venture LC for zoning map amendment for 1.49 acres on East President Street.
You're going to?
I'm 13.
13, that's the rezoning.
13 is a rezone.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that the first reading be considered the second, ordinance placed upon its passage and passed.
Second. 13. 13. Yes. It's been properly moved to second, the first reading be considered the second, and its ordinance placed upon its passage and passed, on item number 13, which is the zoning map amendment from IL, which is light industrial, to PUD, which is the down zone. You've heard the motion, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Now moving to item number 14, which is the petition of Josh Yellen on behalf of SRL Land Venture for an amendment to the Savannah River Landings Plan Development Master Plan for the inclusion of 1.49 acres located East President Street. And this is recommending approval for the request to amend the final master plan for Eastern.
No, this is.
I'm sorry. Yeah, that's the 14. Right, 14. Is there a motion on it? I am 14. This is 14.
Mr. Mayor, to tell you the truth, I need, I need time on this one.
Okay. Again, I'm just seeking what your direction is. This is just an amendment to the Savannah River Landings PUD for the inclusion of the 1.49 acres.
This is the.
Do whatever you want to do. I would say this. Why don't we, you can also just put that on first reading. And it will come back in two weeks. Okay, Mr. Mayor? If we don't unanimously agree this on first and second, we can just put it on first.
Okay.
For 14.
That's for 14.
You want it on first reading, Alderman Leggett?
Right.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I asked that.
Well, you don't have to ask for anything.
It was just for.
Right, it's just on first, correct? It's just on first reading, all right. So, Mr. Yellen, we have approved first and second on 13. On 14, we're on first reading only. 15, which is consistent with 12, is a different petitioner, correct? Are you representing them?
Yes, there's a gentleman here for 12 and 15, as well as his engineer for 12 and 15.
Right. So now we're at 12 and 15.
So just so I know, before I walk away.
Which is a different issue, which is the issue that Ms. Gorecki had really an issue with.
So, Mayor, just so I know, for two weeks.
12 and 15.
First reading was for 10 and 11.
12 and 15.
14.
And you said 13, but not 14? I didn't quite capture that.
13, right. This was the zoning map amendment was approved on first and second.
Yeah, that was approved.
14, the amendment is on first.
First only. Now we're on 15.
Okay. And that's perfect, because that means that the master plan that you see above will come back in two weeks, and it's very much, that's the one piece that's tied to 12 and 15.
Correct.
It'll all come back together. Thank you, sir. That works.
It's coming up. Coming up.
That's 12 and 15. So I guess my question is, because we're also, there are some questions that might need to be answered regarding item number 15.
Yes, sir.
And they're also requesting first and second reading. Do we put that on first reading?
First reading.
And we come back as well?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If I could, one, one, one thing about that, and we'll make sure that you, Council gets all the information that they need and talks to whomever subject matter experts need to talk to about this. As it relates to connectivity and to roads and access, this is future land use map calls for this to be a downtown expansion. And as you can see, it has been the, it has been the decision of City Council for the last 14 years to try to make sure that the Eastern Wharf looks as much like downtown in terms of its streets and connectivity. You can see the squares that are built in there as other parts of the historic downtown. And that connectivity is very important to the town plan. These are public roads. And that, regardless of what the Department of Transportation decides to do with the, you know, overpass of the, a potential future overpass of the railroad tracks and that, and that curb cut there on President Street, just for Council, as you think about this for the next two weeks, that this is a downtown expansion zone. And so connectivity and having that grid is very, very important for the character of that zone.
Mr. Manager, do, Mr. Manager, you have a problem with this being on first reading?
No, sir, not at all.
Okay, and this would allow, A, some time to go by?
Yes, sir.
For us to be able to look at this, and then if there's opportunities, Mr. Manager, for you to send any clarifying information. And for those conversations to continue to occur, then we can do that as well.
Yes, sir, we'll do.
Are y'all all right with that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, since we've not voted on 12 and 15, we have a representative of the Malloy Company who came from Atlanta, who probably cannot come back in two weeks. Can we at least let him be part of the public hearing and address 12 and 15 before we move on? Would that be appropriate? We have both the engineer and the representative who came in from Atlanta.
He's a part of, he's part of the petitioner?
Yes, sir. He is part of the petition for 12 and 15.
All right. I'll allow it, only because he won't have the opportunity to do that. So I'm going to move that, I'm going to ask, I'm going to move that we reopen a public hearing for that comment. Then probably move to second that we reopen the public hearing at item number 12, to allow additional comment. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Come on, sir.
John, do you want to speak? I'll let Thomas speak or both. John Gaskin will be appearing before you at this time, if you state your name for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Gorecki.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for the chance to speak. If I do need to come back in two weeks, obviously I will, if this is important to us. So, but the.
They should do that before we open the hearing. We were opening, so go ahead.
Well, so what I'd like to say simply is, I'm not sure, between 12 and 15, if you boil down the zoning language and PUD and so forth, here's exactly, here's what we're asking for. Is we have built all the townhomes in the community, and we simply bought the two parcels that are causing this text amendment. And they were zoned primarily commercial, but there was no commercial use. We want to build the same townhomes that we've been building on the rest of the project. And there was some language in that text that said the lots had to be 30 feet wide. And so our product is like 28 and a half feet wide. So all we were, when you boil down everything, I don't know about the second access, how we got involved with that. I'll go back and erase that off the plan, because again, we don't have any control over it. But all we're simply asking is the ability to build the same townhomes on that parcel, this is under number 12. And instead of having to do 30 feet, they're essentially 28 and a half feet wide, 26. It's the same thing we've been building for four years. So I'm not sure, I understand where the confusion has come from. Understand about adding, if some access or President Streets added to the community, but I don't even know that there's going to be a connection, or how we got wrapped up in that. That is way beyond what I was expecting to be heard on today. And I would hate, in terms of our timing from a company, because we do have people ready to buy those townhomes, and we're not really doing anything brand new that I would, I certainly would not like to have us delayed for two weeks because of, you know, what sounds like some confusion, not just, but everybody's behalf about what's being asked for here.
Well, I really wanted to buy one myself, but y'all weren't available, so. Mr. Manager, is that your?
You pass this today, and I'll get on to it.
I couldn't afford it even on my best day. Mr. Manager, is this your understanding of where we are?
Yes, and I, this went through MPC staff, and I'm sure that our planning professionals, you know, that because of our ordinance that exists about connectivity, and I'm sure worked in that, you know, access road. And I think we probably need to, you know, consider all of the connectivity that we can have, irregardless of what GDOT wants to do. But I think that the petitions make a tremendous amount of sense for the planned development. It's, the planned development has been very successful. This was a part of the city of Savannah's first and only tax allocation district. It's been very successful. And it's a lovely neighborhood, and I think it only makes a lot of sense to include this last remaining parcel into that PUD and to allow the petitioner to continue to build what they've been building for the last 12 years.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll go with your bias.
Thank you. And your name, sir?
John Gaskin.
Mr. Gassy.
I'm sorry, I should have stated that. I know that. I go to a lot of these hearings.
Mr. Gassy, what you are experiencing here on today is a part of what we do as mayor and city council. We listen to our constituents. And before, and I was here when all this started. And when all of the, when the council back then, it was a different administration, a different, just a different everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Back then, when it was decided to become a PUD, there were no people. There were no structures. There was nothing. Now we are four years later into this, and we see all the verticals on the property. So when we have a constituent, especially when our constituents take the time to come down to our city council meetings and voice their concerns, we listen to them in here, and we listen to them out the doors. We answer our telephones, and we return telephone calls, too. So this is what you're experiencing. So we do have the right, even though sometimes it just makes developers, it makes owners, it makes folks a little bit uncomfortable. But I think at the end of this is going to be a win. We just got to give people a little more time to hear the voices and our council members to be extremely clear, because when we make our votes, our votes go down into record. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Oh, I fully understand. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Aldo, Miller Blakely, then we're going to move on.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Okay, I'm concerned about Mr. Frank Peoples and Mrs.?
Gorecki.
Gorecki. Their concern. Now, did I hear you say that you don't, you won't even worry about that road that she's concerned with, correct?
I didn't exactly mean that. What I'm saying is, I have no control, because that's coming into that light industrial piece. I don't own any of that. That's. I just own what's up in yellow. I own 30 acres, I mean, what's the size of?
I'm familiar with the properties that you build, those that $3 and $9 million townhomes and all that. They're really, really nice ones over there, right?
Well, I've been waiting on it.
Right. So, I'm concerned that she and Mr. Frank Peoples is going to be okay, based on the conversation. Are you okay, Ms. Rebecca? Am I saying it?
Gorecki.
Gorecki. Based on what he said just now.
Ma'am, can I just respond? I think I can simplify this. To the extent that we brought both petitions at the same time, I apologize. I think that adds to some confusion. When you've got rezoning over here by one party, and you've got something over here that's a master plan, that's another on the same development. Because you have said, I've got to come back for 14, that's the actual master plan. That's the only number on this whole list that concerns that road, which is the issue for Mr. Peoples and the issue raised by this woman today at City Council.
Ms. Gorecki.
What Mr. Gaskin has talked about, item 12 and 15, is absolutely unrelated to that road. So even if you approve 12 and 15 today, we have to come back for number 14 for second reading. That is the master plan. It is the only, only item that concerns that road. It's the document that's up there. It's that arrow at the bottom of the page. That's the only thing that's troubling anyone, is the inclusion of that arrow. I'll see if I can come back, perhaps with my client's blessing, in two weeks. If I take off that arrow, we're done. It's that one arrow off of President Street that has caused the concern from two people, neither of whom were at the MPC. So, yes, we will address it. But I also don't want to penalize Mr. Gaskin and his fine company. 12 and 15 is absolutely unrelated to the issues raised. They have to do with the lot size inside the development, has nothing to do with the road.
All the women in there. One moment, one moment, one moment, all the women in there.
Yes, quickly, what you're presenting here, and based on what has happened subsequently, it makes sense. It's a process. But it's not always what you do, but how you do it. And like you said, it may have been a little convoluted today, because these two issues come in at the same time. However, this council is very, we're very concerned about having citizens included in the conversation and basically at the table, being able to negotiate and drive some of this development. Now, our city manager says something we need to think about, about the development plan and what's been planned and how the grid should be laid out. We need to take that into consideration, because once they sit down and start to talk, maybe some of the issues of the resident might be solved through traffic calming. That may be the solution. But we cannot just shut this down, because this is the plan. And now, we do have to tweak plans, but it may be more ways to settle her concerns than shutting the whole, than just being so absolute on this. And that's not for us to decide here. Let them work it out. They'll bring it back to us in a couple of weeks. But Ms.? Ms. Sue will have an opportunity and her neighbors to sit down with you guys and discuss what their concerns are. And I'm sure you all are going to assist them where you can with making sure that they don't get overwrought with what she's concerned about, traffic calming. Traffic calming, that's why we're spending all of this money on traffic calming. So make sure that they're safe from traffic and speeding in their community. But it's going to have to come back. But as far as the first issue, it's in line with what we have been doing. So it got a little, just convoluted today and confused today. But do please, it's important to us that we give our citizens an opportunity to meet with developers and be able to express their concerns. Thank you.
I entertain the motion and reclose the hearing. There's a second. Probably move to second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. All right. I think that we went around the world, but we came back to where we need to be. I'm comfortable with us approving 15, because the issue actually deals with 14, which is on first reading anyway. So that means that this gentleman doesn't have to come back. And we still have time in between two weeks to be able to address the remaining issues. And I think what the city manager said has provided the enlightenment we need to do that. So if you agree, I'll entertain the motion on item number 15. On first and second.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that the first reading be considered a second, and the ordinance placed upon its passage and passed.
Second.
Probably move to second, in all the favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
So he's good.
So we're good? You're good. You're good. You're kind of good, but we'll see you in two weeks. In the meantime, Mr. Manager, y'all need, y'all need, call folk back, Mr. Yellen. Could you do that for me?
Mr. Mayor, I pride myself on returning phone calls. Sometimes you just can't return.
I understand. I get it.
I like to think it's true of every single person up there.
No, I know. No, we understand it. We understand it. Mr. Yellen, but now you got two weeks.
Thank you, Attorney.
Plenty of time.
Right. All right. Mr. Mar, you're good? Oh, shoot.
No, not at all. No, no, no. What I want to say is, the city actually has a fairly robust system for creating the neighborhoods, you know, getting the information out there for who should be contacted. But if you do not actually have an appointed neighborhood organization with a head, it is really, really difficult to schedule a meeting.
Right.
There was some conversation earlier about holding people to certain standards. When you all adopt standards, those represent minimum standards. So, we want to make sure that everybody is kind of held to that, you know, low bar of the minimum standard regardless of who you may be. And so, with regard to this particular petition, Rafael Anutini at the Housing Authority is my usual point of contact, simply because there is no designated neighborhood association to notify and say, "Hey, you have to have a meeting. You're requesting a rezoning or there's a rezoning requested in your area." If there's not a neighborhood association, there's not going to be a meeting. So, staff always reaches out, staff always reaches out to notify people that things are happening if I happen to know someone. But an applicant cannot be held to the standard if you don't have a designated neighborhood head.
Right. And maybe we need to also include that. It is just, right.
Some of those housing developments do have representation within this.
Well, but then I think it's our, it's our responsibility to make sure they know.
Right.
Because we may know because we're a little bit on, more on the ground. So, maybe we need to make sure to connect those. Sometimes we don't know.
When you go on open neighborhoods and you click and you don't see a name, that means there's nobody to contact. So, the system is there. It's just not.
We just need to make sure it's populated correctly. Okay.
Mr. Mar, I made that statement and I just want to be clear about what I said. The Housing Authority, you have a contact person. But when there are not established meetings, it does not mean that we can't knock on doors because those people are personally impacted. When there's something in front of me, I knock on doors because I'm not signing anything that one or two people have not been told about. A lot of people are not on social media so they don't know about. But it impacts them and sometimes it's negative. So, I don't want you to say that I said that if there's not a meeting place, there can't be a meeting. But there are people who live there who should know what's going on. And a lot of times that doesn't happen. And I'm not trying to stop progress. I know it's happening. But we got to let people that impacts the most and it does the most harm and it changes the quality of their life. And that's what I'm saying. And that's what I'm going to continue to say.
All right. We just have to make sure that, you know, there is a mechanism by which that occurs.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. Glad we got that worked out.
Mr. Mayor.
Item number 16 through 24. We're going to pull item number 16 and we'll go 17 through 24. Any other pullouts?
19, please.
I'd like to make a motion.
Wait, one moment, one moment, one moment. All the women in there?
19, please.
All right. We're pulling out 19.
If there are no more pullouts.
Okay. Go ahead.
All the women.
Pull 16 and 19.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of items number 17, 18, 20 through 24.
Probably move then second that we approve item number 17, which is authorized city manager executed contract for polymers from Polydine Incorporated amount not to exceed $120,000. 18 authorized city manager to execute a contract for a flood plain management plan with WSP USA local in amount not to exceed $80,968. Item number 19, sorry, item number 20, authorized city manager executed contract for the purchase of equipment with Templeton and Associates in an amount not to exceed $250,000. 21 authorized city manager executed contract modification and renewal for armed security services with various facilities with Sun State Security Services in an amount not to exceed $2,938,492. Item number 22 authorized city manager executed contract design for Fell Street Pump Station in amount not to exceed $732,655. Item number 23 authorized city manager executed contract for equipment for the Savannah Police Department's Headquarters Renovation Project with MGT Local in the amount not to exceed $120,000. And item number 24 authorized city manager executed a construction contract with Sancos Restoration and Waterproofing LLC in amount of $613,650 to perform crack and spa repairs in the Whittaker Street Garage. Heard the motion? All the favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number 19 authorized city manager to execute a contract for multimodal transportation implementation plan with Kimberly Horn in amount not to exceed $500,000. Mr. Manager, well, I'm sorry. Yeah, let me do that first. You want that? All the women in there?
Yes. I just wanted to talk about this a little bit. This is, we're contracting with a company to create a plan and we're going to pay them up to $500,000. And it's concerning key projects of mobility and economic growth and our Vision Zero where we place traffic calming inside of that program, equitable access that will reduce delays and safety and environmental sustainability. And so, we're going to work this plan out. I wanted to pull this because I'm concerned because in this climate, we need to consider the changes in our economics and the economic environment going forward. Some of these things have been on our table, on the radar for a long time. Some of them have been, maybe it's just some special interest projects that we have been accommodating and pushing along, taking down the overpass, the Vision Zero. However, I'm meeting regularly with residents on the west side in Woodville, Hudson Hill, and West Savannah. And they keep asking me about traffic calming every meeting. You all were two hour meeting on Monday and you saw how much that came up, Bridget and the development folks. And it's every meeting. Now, first, when I was trying to get traffic calming for these neighborhoods, I was told that the older person cannot request and place that. So, we switched to neighborhood presidents and they placed requests for traffic calming in these neighborhoods. And now they were told, and this is what they told me, that the system changed again and the presidents weren't able to request the traffic calming because now it changed where we had to go to the residents who live near the affected areas and ask them to do the work of the application and rally in the neighbors on the traffic calming. And that happened. Now, what they're telling me is that although they put in these applications and folks, staff would come out and put down these mechanisms on the road, traffic counting devices, whatever, then they're notified that they don't qualify. So, we went from no traffic calming to no traffic calming. They have even requested signage as a traffic calming measure and have not received that in the fashion they've been asking. So, I needed to stop this where we about to spend the $500,000. It's where we're underfunded. We did get some traffic calming in Calabrowville and Carver Village. And then Cloverdale.
And Cloverdale.
But they're telling me when I go to these neighborhoods, they see why those neighborhoods got them and not these. And then we had a couple of children got hit by cars by a playground we've been requesting traffic calming and haven't gotten it. I needed to say this because we need the traffic calming throughout the rest of the west side. And I keep voting on these measures and still don't see what is being requested and not for fashion, for need in these communities. And so, I needed to bring that up, Mr. Manager, as we consider this plan. And I want to support these initiatives, but I've been wanting to get that traffic calming to those affected people for so long and can't seem to do that. So, what are we going to do?
To take on the two items that you raised, one is the local roads transportation plan was absolutely as needed. And two, the process for traffic calming devices. So, in, I've been here three and a half years. There's only been one change to the traffic calming process, and that was to lower the barrier to approve traffic calming devices. So, in three and a half years, it's always been, you know, there's some critical mass of property owners or residents who've got to approve of a traffic calming petition in order for that to be reviewed by engineers. It used to be that only if 50 plus 1% of property owners to an adjacent proposed traffic calming device, if you didn't get 50 plus 1% of those property owners to approve, then you couldn't lay down the device, right? I changed that and we changed that to, there was going to be a 90-day temporary period. And if we didn't hear objections from more than 50% plus 1% of property owners, then we were going to move forward with laying down the permanent devices. And we have more than tripled our traffic calming speed table production since 20, late 2020, well, the 2022 budget and to now. We are laying down more than three times as many traffic calming devices as we did when I got here in 2021. So, there, I know that there are continued calls for traffic calming and we need more traffic calming devices. It's not a matter of money. And there are some places that don't warrant a traffic calming device. And there are reasons why you don't want a speed table someplace because we also have to make sure that we're able to get a fire truck to every home within, you know, 3 minutes and 40 seconds, right? And so, those traffic calmings, there really, really is about the need to be able to move public safety vehicles through our streets quickly. But there are other devices related to traffic calming that aren't speed tables, like road diets, murals on sidewalks, things that we have been trying out in different places that we'll continue to do. And I think, you know, I've heard loud and clear from this council for three years, we've increased our funding for traffic calming. I heard in our discussion about Splo State, that traffic calming needed to be a big part of that. And so, we've heard that and we're running those numbers to make sure that you have that to vote on. I think that the local streets transportation plan is absolutely critical, not only to tackling where do we want traffic calming devices just everywhere? Do we want those around schools? Do we want them around playgrounds? Where do they work? But also to say, where don't we have sidewalks where we need sidewalks? Where don't we have trails that we need trails? How are we making sure that we're connecting communities? So, you know, GDOT put out their Coastal Empire Plan, which dealt with state roads. We've got to come back with a local roads transportation plan that meets the values of this council, which is that multimodal and safety piece. So, I absolutely hear you about, let's put our money where our priorities are. I think that we have, you know, we've tripled our production of speed table use and we're going to continue to increase those investments. But I would also advocate that this is, this is something that we need to in order to make sure that we're moving forward on all of our other local modality policies as well.
Thank you. Let me say, is this the last thing, please? If you notice, Mr. Manager, the three neighborhoods that I called out who are really vocal right now about this, Woodville, Hudson Hill, and West Savannah, those are the three neighborhoods we have in Savannah that's most impacted by industrial and port traffic, near port communities. And so, what they're experiencing besides the speeding, because we're going to have to slow this traffic down, is cut-throughs of industrial, increasing industrial traffic. Something else, we got a new thing. We got some blinking, blinking red and white lights coming through people's windows at night. That's the cranes at the port. That's a new thing. That's a whole nother conversation. But right now, that industrial traffic impacting heavily those particular neighborhoods, they need some help. They really do need some help out there. And I want to support all of our efforts to manage these problems. And once again, I'm going to support it because I'm still hoping that we see a change. So, if we ready, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman, leg it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My fellow council members, we have reached my favorite portion of the program because I wonder what's going to happen. It took until 4:01 because we're going to be talking about, my colleagues are not talking about what they're doing. They're talking about what they're getting. They're talking about where it's going to go. How am I going to benefit? And you know what? I'm all for self-interest. That's okay. I'm all for self-interest because today we stand at a crossroads of Savannah's history. The decision before us today isn't about infrastructure. It's the possibility in what city do we want to become.
Come on now.
Savannah Moves represents a plan for tomorrow, integrating all modes of transportation, walking, biking, cycling, trucks, traffic, airplanes, you know, self-piloting drones. I have no idea. But we have to think about them all because every path is necessary if we're going to chart our course to the future.
Right.
When a parent can't reach their workplace, when a senior can't cross the street, when a child can't ride their bike without fear, we all suffer. We do. Vision Zero isn't just a policy goal. And we've had to go to the core NPO and cut that out because it's not appropriate for this administration. We can't say the word pedestrian. We have to call them mobility patriots.
Come on.
And at least in this bastion of reason, can we all agree that we're going to save lives? Can we agree today that $500,000 is worth our time and energy and investment to actually do something? So, I say we choose vision over complacency. Let this $500,000 that we can craft today, it's a drop in the bucket for what we need. I know we have 100 miles of sidewalks that we need to build and all of these things, but it's a start.
Make the motion.
Go ahead. Let's do it.
I'd like to make a comment.
Well, that's one moment.
I move for the approval of item number 19 authorized the city manager to execute a contract for multimodal transportation implementation.
Probably move in second and all the women, Miller Blakely.
Thank you so much. I'm going to say this. All the woman in there was so nice in what she was saying in reference to West Savannah, Hudson Hill, and all those other areas, marginalized areas, not getting traffic calming devices. When I ride in the city of Savannah, when I ride the 4th District, the 3rd District, the 5th District, and the 2nd District, I see traffic calming devices all over the place. But when you go into West Savannah, into the marginalized communities, there's nothing hardly there. And I understand what you're saying. And we ain't got nothing against Vision 500. I mean, Vision Zero. But the bottom line is this. Let's have equity in this city for all areas of this city, for all communities. We have been asking for traffic calming devices in West Savannah since we got on council. I even asked to be on the traffic calming committee and was voted against by my colleagues to not be on that committee. At the end of the day, if you doing it on the 3rd District, the 4th District, and the 5th District, doggone it, why you can't do it in the 1st District as well?
Let me just add, because Cloverdale.
Nice.
No, Cloverdale on Bel Air Drive.
Got a big old mural with a flower that don't nobody stop at.
No, ma'am. No, they have a traffic control. They have a speed bump. Listen, listen.
Traffic calming devices in that area. But you don't have it in West Savannah. You don't have it in Hudson Hill. Come on now.
Due to the advocacy of all the women in there. We can move them from there and we can put them wherever you want to put them.
Can't move them. They're permanent.
Oh, no, you can move them.
You cannot move those concrete.
You can move them. They are, that's correct. So, I mean, well, I mean, the reality is, I mean, so.
You don't want to move them, but you want to put them in areas that's going to benefit. When a four-year-old child loses, get hit by a car.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Because I'm not going to let you sit here and disparage the word of staff.
That's right.
Because the point of the matter is this. No, 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 no.
I'm not disparaging the word. I'm glad that they're doing it. Just make it equitable.
When they came, when they came to the Cloverdale community, they came at the behest of all the women in there and my support. We can move them and put them in West Savannah. Listen, no, no.
Why not West Savannah? Because she's advocated for West Savannah. She's advocated for.
But to say, but to say that is not been in the 1st District is an outright lie.
I'm not saying the 1st District. I'm saying it's not in West Savannah. It's not in Hudson Hill.
No, you just said.
Did I not say that? Did I not name? We're not going to do this. It's needed in that area in the marginalized communities. And it's not there. Anybody can ride around and see it.
What you're not going to do is misrepresent. You just sat here and called numbers of the 4th District and the 6th District. And why can't it be in the 1st District? That's what you said. All right. I'm just showing you where it is in the 1st District.
Very little. We just started.
So, no, now, now, all the women, now, all the women, I will, I will agree with you. So, no, now, now, Alderman, now, Alderman, Alderman, I will, I will agree with you. So hence, hence, we have the opportunity to add more.
We starting.
And we will. And that's why I propose that one of our main thrust in the next FLOs is for traffic control devices. So that A, that A, we would have as a rule for traffic control, for traffic calming devices to be around every single park in the city of Savannah. And then for them to be able to spread equally around it. But to, but to say that there is none in the first district is an outright lie.
I stand corrected.
Okay, well.
In Cloverdale it is.
Well, good.
But in Hudson Hill, West Savannah.
And we need to, and yes, yes.
Say that again, Alderman?
We have six places.
Yes.
Six places is young.
And I absolutely agree. I absolutely agree.
I got twelve places.
I absolutely agree. I absolutely agree. So then it makes our conversation so much easier when it comes time for us to support this FLOs so we can get what we need to have what we need. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, going to item number sixteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Now, item number sixteen, I'm going to say, this is authorized city manager to execute a contract for new parking garages, owner's representative with Stan Tech Consulting Services in the amount not to exceed seven hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. This contract is for owner's representative consultant, consultation services for assistance with the design and construction of two parking garages, a four-hundred-and-fifty-space Forsyth Park Parking Garage and a six-hundred-to-seven-hundred-space Eastern Wharf Garage with residential units above. I pulled this only because there was at least ten items, there was ten comments that we received from the public in opposition of this, and I just wanted to lift that we did have some public comment against it. There's a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, move for the approval, item number sixteen is written.
So moved.
They probably moved in second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item, what, yes, ma'am.
Can the city manager give an explanation as to why he did that the way he did? Is that the Forsyth Park?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, could you please explain to the general public, because a lot of people are just concerned about that?
Certainly.
Thank you.
So number sixteen is a contract for owner's representation with Stan Tech Consulting for two parking garages that are currently included in two different development agreements that City Council has approved, one in twenty-eighteen and one last year. One garage is a development agreement signed in twenty-eighteen for another garage in Eastern Wharf, which the city is obligated to support the building of. And the other is for a parking garage at Whittaker and Park for a proposed development there. Doing a RFP for a combined owner's rep for those two projects creates some economies of scale and allows us to get a better price for the representation. I understand that some members of the community are against that development, and if that development doesn't come to pass, then we will not charge, then we will not be billed for those services for that garage because we would not have any owner's representation because there wouldn't be a construction there. But in the event that that project does move forward, we want to have owner's representation there because in every public-private partnership that we do involving parking garages, we have to have subject matter expertise in engineering and project managing onsite representing us, the city of Savannah, because that, the product will ultimately be ours. And we want to make sure that it's built to our standards, to our specifications, that it's done so within our budget and on our timeline, and that when the product is delivered, it's in a condition that we will be able to recoup the money we are putting forward because it's an enterprise fund, it's a parking fund, and we get revenue from that parking to pay for that parking infrastructure. So that's why it's very vital. Every public entity that's worth its salt has owner's representations for P-three projects. This is for that. We combine the two projects because it provides some economies of scale and because there's some likelihood that they'll be moving very, very on the same, closely related to the same timeline.
Thank you.
Item thirty-two, and Anita Smith Dixon has been so patient, she's had a very long day. This is authorized the Community Housing Service Agency to make a one million two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar loan for the Savannah Affordable Housing Fund in support of two thousand twenty-five low-income housing tax credit applications to develop forty-one affordable housing apartments on vacant land at seventeen-hundred Drayton Street and one oh-four East Thirty-Fourth Street. We're back at that again. This is to, if awarded tax credits, this loan will leverage about eighteen-point-seven million dollars in additional financing. And so this helps us make our application more competitive, and I am moving for approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Move loudly, sir.
Second motion.
And probably move the second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Smith Dixon, thank you for your work today. Item, agreements, item thirty-three through thirty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself for number thirty-six.
Okay, let's just do thirty-three through thirty-five.
Mr. Mayor, like, break a motion.
Thirty-seven through thirty, and thirty-eight.
And can you add number forty into that too, sir?
Forty?
Yes, sir.
Is it on the same title?
It's been withdrawn.
It's not on the same title.
They took that from off the agenda.
Forty's been withdrawn.
Okay, very good, sir. Yes, sir, I'd like to move that these agenda items to be adopted as written.
All right, let me make sure we're clear. Item number thirty-three through thirty-five, approval of a water sewer agreement with Lennar Carolinas LLC for Edgewater and New Hampstead Phases. Item number thirty-four is approval of a water sewer agreement with Riverbend Savannah One LLC for Rockingham Track Six-A Two, Building Seven-B. Thirty-five is approval of water sewer agreement with Riverbend Savannah One LLC for Rockingham Track Six-A dash one. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number thirty-seven is approval of a water sewer agreement with Manger Building and Property Owner LLC for the Manger, where you go?
Oh, come back in, Alderman Purte.
Alderman Purte, yeah. Megan, well, I'm going back to it.
Back to the item, come back in.
I'm going back to it. To the Manger Hotel. Item number thirty-eight is authorized city manager execute a contract with the Savannah, Georgia Convention Center Authority for the Menner Restated Hotel, Hotel Taxation according to state law. Your motion in a second.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So move, sir.
Second.
Probably move the seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number thirty-six is approval of water and sewer agreement with the Savannah-Chattanooga Public School System for Windsor Forest High School. It's for a development replacement school at one-two-four-one-nine Lago Drive in the Willshire Service Area in Automatic District Six. Let the record note that Alderman Purte has recused himself due to business reasons.
So move, sir.
Is there a second? Properly moved the seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number thirty-nine is a settlement. Item number forty has been withdrawn by the property owner. Item number thirty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the city attorney's office to resolve the claim of Nuwazi for sixty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Then, then, item thirty-nine has moved to authorize city attorney's office to resolve the claim of Nuwaz for sixty-five thousand dollars. You've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that ends our approved agenda. Yes, sir.
I have one announcement.
Yes, sir.
I do want to lift up the family of one of my church members and District Six folks who was a strong force and a reckon, a force to be reckoned with within the community, Wayne Bland of Savannah, Georgia, District Six and Windsor Forest Area, who was one of three people who founded Recovery Place. And he, over the course of twenty-five years, was instrumental in helping those with mental illness and addiction, thousands of people here in the Savannah area. We're going to be celebrating his life this Saturday at Asbury Memorial at the corner of Henry and Waters. We lift his family up in our prayers.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, the angel of death has been really busy in the third district. We want to pray for the soul of Miss Pearl Jackson, she was over a hundred, and Miss Robinson. And we also funeralized my sorrow and family friend, Rosemary Banks.
Good day.
Alderman, Carol Bell, and Dietrich, they spoke and they did a great job representing the city. I also wanted to share that the gentleman that we see, I wanted to tag that on to what the Alderman from the fourth district was talking about. Everybody knows Larry Haywood. He's the guy that rides the bicycle with the big flag. He was hit by a car. He was hit by a car, broke both his arms, his legs, and he's on a ventilator now. Y'all pray for him. He is a poster child, you know, from being all over this city, and we have to do better about our commitment in trying to save lives when it comes to traffic fatalities. He's not a fatality. We want to pray, but I wanted to attach that, what Nick said. We got to do better. We said we were going to do better, and we kind of put the bricks on that. And so I wanted to mention that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone, yes?
I want to send out condolences to Mr. Charles Gordon, who passed away. He was funeralized.
His family.
To his family, yes. He was funeralized on yesterday.
Yes. Alderman Bell, Alderman Chabazz, and myself attended on behalf of the city. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I didn't really raise my hand. She mentioned Rosemary. We were there today. The family of Rosemary Banks from, Ambassador Rosemary Banks.
Ambassador.
From the second district and just a wonderful person who delivered service, committed service to this community as long as she was able so to her family. Dr. Leon Banks, a professor at University of Georgia, her only son. We're extending condolences on behalf.
She was my third grade teacher.
Oh, and she was my colleague's third grade teacher. She said Rosemary was her Diana Ross.
That's right.
So that gives you an idea of the type of person she was.
Let's play with that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Also, we want to lift up Reverend Blackshear. He will be funeralized on Saturday.
And the police officer.
Yeah, we also lift up Wesley Crenshaw, who was funeralized this week, and also now Captain Marcus Graves, who was a Savannah police officer who retired from us and became a Chatham County police officer, and his life was celebrated this week as well. Folks, you never know what folks. Mary Simmons, one oh-three. Mary Simmons celebrated one hundred and third birthday and still looking cute. So we celebrate her as well.
I want to say, Dorothy Wilson, she came before this council last year, I think, and many of you knew her, some of you may have had her as a teacher in elementary, middle school.
Ninety-five.
She celebrated her ninety-fifth birthday on Saturday, and she does not seem to be ninety-five.
I like to.
No deal with fifty years old.
Send out condolences to the Shields family, my next door neighbor, Mr. Willie Royce Shields, retired longshoreman, passed away. He had a lot of relatives still down at ILA Hall. We've been probably neighbors, probably over fifty years, big gentle giant. So condolences to the Shields family.
Lot of people going through.
Yes.
Never know what people going through, yes.
I forgot to announce this right here, they're taking applications for summer, taking applications all over the city for, you know, the summer programs at our rec areas. I'm talking about the parks in the third district, they're taking applications and all the other parks too, summer programs.
Also, the school board, the school board is hiring fifteen-year-olds, and it's all over social media. I forgot to bring the flyer with me, but if you have children that's fifteen years old, up until I believe it's eighteen, a school age, high school age, please let them go ahead and apply for those positions with our school board.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, you have anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Attorney, you have anything? Mr. Clerk, I mean, Mr. Region Three Director, do you have anything?
Missy!
All right. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Team Savannah. We stand adjourned.
We need to talk.